Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, August 22, 2022. We call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all the members are present of the city council and like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance requires that the city council be required to approve the consent, the nomination, and the draft of the proposal.
Thank you very much. There's nothing under general this evening, brings us to item five. Any committee correspondents to council? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. So I'm just reporting out of the school construction site committee in particular. I think it's pretty well-known at this point anyway, based on the fact that it's been in the media that the preferred site for the site selection for new school has unexpectedly been removed. So, that being the Sweetser site. At this point, I think we've decided to stay in contact with Sweetser and will be submitting the extensive amount of work that has been done, really for their own use, but just to kind of complete the circle and maybe with hopes that, you know, they, as they move along, may come to a different conclusion. But we did direct the superintendent to move forward with site number two, which is the Claire Parcels, so I thought it was important to inform the council of that. I guess that's really it at this, this stage, but that's the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondents at this time? Moving on to item six, public comment. Only one person had signed up, and that is Betty Brunswick. Again, those signing up and wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and please speak directly into the microphone. You have three minutes.
Good evening, council. Mayor and city administrator Brian Kinrath. I am Betty Brunswick, 11 Old Orchard Road here in Saco. I'm just here to express my thanks to Denise Clavett for her wonderful work on the Economic Development Department. She's been a wonderful department head, and I couldn't have asked for a better person to lead it, and I hope you agree with that. Another reason why I want to bring this up is that when I was, and I still am, on the commission, the Economic Development Commission, we had a little bit of a say in who that department head was going to be as far as getting to meet those candidates and expressing our opinion to the then-city administrator and the then-mayor at the time. And I hope something similar might happen this time. In the past, when I was on city council, the then-city administrator would just go ahead and hire whoever he deemed worthy of the position without input from even a city councillor. So as much input as we can get from any stakeholders for this position would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. That position is on the website, and we are accepting applications for that position. If there's anyone else who would like to address council, please come forward and be
Robert Biggs, 92 Middle Street. Mayor, city councillors, city administrator Kane Rith, thank you for your time. I hope you're all enjoying this glorious Maine summer. First of all, I'd like to express my belated congratulations to the Saco Main Street Organization, Executive Director Jen Day, Event Coordinator Holly Gordon, and the Board of Directors and all the great volunteers for the fantastic car show, the classic car show that was held at the latter part of July. It was truly a great day for the downtown. I think you'll all agree with that. Secondly, as a resident of Saco and a current member of the planning board, I would like to express my, and I say my, not the planning boards, but my enthusiasm for your confirmation of the appointment of Michael Joyce to the Saco Planning Board. Although Michael is a relatively newcomer to Saco, he and his wife and children, new TA students, have made this city their home, and Michael has offered his extensive experience as a lawyer working with international clients on project development and community infrastructure. I look forward to his legal experience and diverse background, bringing an additional facet of insight to our board, as well as his commitment to his new hometown. By our charter, one of the mayors of Saco's important duties is to identify and appoint individuals to all various boards and committees. In conducting this duty, I feel he needs to be responsible in working to add to the boards individuals that will create a diversity of opinions, ideas, and skill sets, and I would suggest that Michael would fit that bill quite well. I also look forward to working with him should you confirm his appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council, please come forward and be heard. Moving on from public comment to item seven, approval of the minutes. There are no minutes to approve. Brings us to item eight, the consent items. There are several agenda items for consent, and A is confirm mayor's appointment of Michael Joyce to the planning board, B, confirm mayor's appointment of Gene Saunders to the Transit Committee, item C, asset forfeiture, State versus Pendleton, item D, combined massage therapist and establishment license, Stephanie Sellers doing business as Ease Massage and Manual Therapy, and then item E, confirm dates for September and October council meetings. It's my understanding that Councilor Hatch would like to remove item A, so if there's a motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda, and then we'll take care of item A. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Councilor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. All items but A. Any discussion? Roll call vote on all items but A. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Now we look at item A, which is confirm mayor's appointment of Michael Joyce to the planning board. Page two in your packet and assigned to Councilor Purdy.
Thank you. The planning board is comprised of seven members appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council for three-year terms. Each commission member shall be a resident of the city, serve without compensation, and must meet the qualifications outlined in section 4-34 of the city's administrative code. Mayor Doyle has recommended Michael Joyce, Ward Three, be appointed to the planning board to fill a vacant seat with the term ending on May 1, 2024. Be it ordered that the city council confirm the mayor's appointment of Michael Joyce to the planning board for a term expiring on May 1, 2024. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Once again, as I have done several times during my relatively brief term on the city council, I'm extremely concerned about the selection process leading up to mayoral appointment. Tonight I am taking exception to the specific process leading up to Michael Joyce's appointment to the planning board. I commend Mr. Joyce's formal expression of interest in serving the community approximately three weeks ago, and my comments are not intended to reflect poorly on him. To get to the heart of my appointment process concerns, I want to share with the public the factual details of the timeline leading to Mr. Joyce's appointment. Earlier this summer, a Ward Five constituent, David Aronstam, expressed his interest in serving on the planning board. After having attended several planning board meetings, he indicated he had developed an interest in the planning board process and felt his skills could best serve the community in a volunteer planning board role. David has been a close friend for over 25 years. Knowing him well, I could not have agreed more with his self-assessment. He is a man of integrity, blessed with a heavy dose of honesty and fairness. I know he joins me and others in supporting smart growth initiatives for the city. David asked me to let him know when a planning board seat was available, as he would then officially submit his name or appointment consideration. He has expressed to me that he is interested in serving only on the planning board. Here is the timeline that subsequently ensued. While attending a 4:00 PM July 18 Economic Development Commission meeting at City Hall, I sat next to planning board member Jen Day, who had just been hired as executive director of Saco Main Street. After offering her my sincere congratulations and support in her new position, I asked about her future status as a planning board member. She replied the mayor had asked her to stay in the role until he was able to find a replacement, which she said she agreed to do. I find no fault with Ms. Day's actions other than she might have been better advised to submit her formal resignation, written resignation, including her willingness to serve until a replacement was appointed. This would have added a layer of needed transparency to the process. For the record, I voted against Ms. Day's previous appointment to the planning board, reaching out to her in advance to explain my vote. I explained that the negative vote had nothing to do with her, but everything to do with my perception that the very competent and experienced planning board incumbent she replaced was being subjected to questionable reappointment treatment. When Ms. Day was appointed to the planning board by Mayor Doyle, she represented Ward Five. When I returned home from DDC meeting a little later that same evening, I communicated with David Aronstam that an opening on the planning board was in the offing, and that if he were still interested in a planning board appointment, he should submit his application. I'm also aware there's no city charter requirement that every ward is represented on the planning board. However, the charter does limit the number of planning board representatives from any ward to two. Ms. Day was one of two from Ward Five, a ward facing the development of what will likely be the largest residential development project in Saco's land use history. A commitment to smart growth initiatives would logically dictate that Ward Five is deserving of two planning board representatives, at least until that project achieves a planning board decision. At 7:41 PM on July 18, same day, I mean, a few hours after my conversation with Ms. Day, Dave and Aronstam submitted an email to Mayor Doyle, city administrator Kane Rath, and all seven city councillors describing his professional credentials. I have been involved in the hiring of numerous individuals during my professional career with a reasonable level of success. When objectively reviewing David Aronstam's application, here's what I see. One, over 30 years as a resident of Saco, where he raised his family, ran two successful businesses, and has been a very act, been very active in the community. He is a very respected citizen who always sees and understands the long-term needs of the community. His academic achievements include undergraduate degrees from Bates College in mathematics and English, a master's degree from Harvard in journalism and new media studies, and a master's degree from the University of Arizona in technology and education. He is a published author, he is a voracious reader, and this is a skill that would serve him well when sifting through hundreds of pages of planning board application materials. He is a very logical and reasonable thinker. I am blessed with many friends much smarter than me, and David is one of them. For the first half of his professional career, David was immersed in management positions within the banking industry, specifically in the design and maintenance of evolving IT infrastructure. His high-level understanding of bank regulatory compliance would be a tremendous asset in his ability to interpret and apply municipal land use ordinances. For nearly two decades, David has worked as a mathematics, computer science, and English teacher at the Hornet Academy. He has worked with students of every ability, teaching AP English, AP Computer Programming, and working with students in remedial literacy. He has often told me, there is no more important job than teaching and helping the students. He has been selected as a finalist for Maine's Teacher of the Year, and has worked on accreditation teams for schools across New England. This experience would serve as a tremendous asset when considering a large-scale residential real estate development project's impact on our school system. Most recently, David has teamed up with his son to form a small-scale, single-family residential construction company based in Saco. His strong aptitude for moving seamlessly from conceptual construction design to final construction would be another tremendous asset as a planning board member. The planning board is currently populated with a landscape design architect and a residential real estate broker, eliminating the argument that David's profession poses a conflict of interest. Like current planning board members, I'm confident David would recuse himself from voting on certain planning board applications if the appearance of a conflict necessitated it. His high level of integrity fuels his desire for transparency. David is also a proud military veteran, and his son is also a military veteran. This serves to strengthen David's resolve to provide service to his community. Finally, David is an independent, critical thinker. If anyone thinks that I would personally influence any planning board decisions that David was a party to, they would be unequivocally wrong. I would not disrespectfully place my good friend in such a compromising position, nor would he accept my influence. At 8:37 that same evening, less than one hour later, Mayor Doyle responded to David's email indicating, I quote, "At this time, there are no current openings on the planning board," close quote. I will leave it to the mayor to defend the integrity and transparency of that statement. The mayor also indicated, I quote, "Please know there are several planning board applications already submitted," end quote. The mayor instructed David to go online and complete the city's website form, and David did so at 8:58 PM that same evening, approximately 30 minutes later. David has also indicated he has received no follow-up communication from the mayor to discuss his application. City Clerk Hughes subsequently acknowledged receipt of David's online application indicating, "At this time, there are no openings," this is a quote, "at this time, there are no openings on the planning board until spring of 2024," end quote. Now, City Clerk Hughes, a very trustworthy and respected city staff member, was obviously not aware of the mayor's wait-and-see strategy I previously described. I took it upon myself to get copies of the several planning board applications already submitted, as was referenced in Mayor Doyle's email to David. I found two. After carefully reviewing each application from a would-I-hire-this-person perspective, I concluded the following. One application was dated December 13, 2020, almost three years ago. The applicant listed interest in serving on several different boards and commissions, including the planning board, with no strong preference for any board or commission. In my view, based on the information provided, the applicant has no academic or work experience particularly relevant to the duties of a planning board member. The second application is dated April 9, 2022. The applicant indicates that they have been a resident of Saco for less than one year, and expressed interest in serving on numerous city boards and commissions, including the planning board, again with no strong preference for any board or commission. In my view, based on the information provided, the applicant has no academic or work experience relevant to the duties of the planning board. As you can see in your packet for tonight's council meeting, Michael Joyce's application was submitted at 12:24 PM on August 2, approximately two weeks after Mr. Aronstam's application and well into the mayor's wait-and-see strategy. Mr. Joyce listed interest in serving on the Economic Development Commission, the Energy and Sustainability Committee, or the planning board with no strong preference expressed. Being a short-term resident of the city who acknowledges little understanding of the community, he suggests that his interest to serve is designated to, and I quote, "better understand the community and its needs," end quote. Now that is an admirable, long-term goal. One would assume that would be, I'm sorry, that is an admirable, long-term goal. It's my understanding, after inquiring at City Hall, that Mr. Joyce is not a registered voter in the city. Now, one would assume that would be step number one in gaining a connection to the community and to municipal governance. So with all due respect, gaining that long-term understanding while serving in a critical planning board role would seem counterproductive to the city's smart growth initiatives. In conclusion, the mayor has publicly stated on numerous occasions his commitment to transparency and smart growth initiatives within the city. It is very apparent to me and many other citizens in the community that I have spoken with that the city of Saco is on the cusp of the potential for exponential residential growth, particularly in Ward Three and Ward Five. It is also apparent that we are not yet prepared for the infrastructure impact of this growth. The burden of zoning ordinance compliance rests with the planning board. Using consistent vernacular, smart growth requires smart decisions, including appointments to fill vacancies on the planning board. So given the choice before us, and the lack of transparency leading to their availability, I do not find Mr. Joyce's appointment to be smart. In fact, I question the integrity of the process. The city charter provides sensible decision-making checks and balances between the city council and the mayor. In Chapter Four, Article Seven, Section 4-34, Planning Board Paragraph A, One, the charter clearly gives planning board appointment authority to the mayor. However, that section of the charter also indicates the city council has the authority to confirm or deny any appointment in the event checks and balances are needed to prevent a problematic appointment. Given the developments I have cited above, I am not interested in being complicit with a faulty appointment process. As such, I will be voting no on Mr. Joyce's appointment, and I send my sincere apologies to him for him being innocently thrust into this controversy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Purdy?
Couple of points to Councilor Hatch's statement. Nowhere in the charter or the codes is there a reference to first come, first served, or who applied first, who applied second. That's, also, there's no reference to any time requirement for residency in the city. Mr. Joyce has lived in Saco, he's a resident of Saco for a year, he wants to serve his new community, that's commendable. I don't like repeating myself, but I'll repeat what I said several weeks ago during another appointment. It's a mayoral appointment, it's not a council appointment. Agree or disagree with that appointment? Disagree with it, then the office of mayor is up for election next November, we can change it. But it's one of the few powers granted to the mayor in the city of Saco's government structure, so I, my only concern is that, like I said, I'm not privy to the mayor's discussions with any potential applicants or his decision-making process. My only concerns are, is the individual qualified? And he's a resident? As long as it doesn't put more than two planning board members in Ward Three, I'm content with the mayor's choice, that's his prerogative, and I'm not going to question it. If I thought the individual was completely not qualified, then yeah, maybe I'd have a problem with it, but he seems qualified and he's a resident, and for me, that's all it boils down to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilor Purdy had mentioned, I mean, it is the duty of the mayor to present a candidate to us in the way for last seven years, and I have voted down one appointment before, and I made comments about how there was, it was connected to conversations with that candidate, the other candidate before. What I look for is when a candidate's presented is, are they qualified in the end? Because we don't get to just vote down until we get the ones we want. Are there other citizens in this city that have longer term, like been in our community longer? Yes. I do see that this gentleman is a lawyer who's worked on multiple range of project developments in a range of industries, so I do count that as experience. While it may not be city governance experience, it is legal experience, so that could hold value. The other way, what I also wanted to recognize is that he's replacing someone who was limited in experience with our city, Ms. Day, who was confirmed. So, in that fact, is the reason why I'm going to vote yes is because I haven't seen anything from this applicant that would lead me to be wary of his appointment. Well, again, it may not be, there may be various other people in this community, they're not the ones being presented to us today. So, again, I've never met this individual, but based on the email that we received that's in the packet, just telling us of his experience, I do not see any reason why not to allow him to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I largely agree with Counselor Archer's analysis. For better or worse, committee appointments are at the discretion of the mayor, which makes them kind of de facto a political appointment. And to me, the right way to disagree with the mayor's appointments is through the political process. Moreover, although Counselor Hatch read a very impressive set of qualifications for his preferred candidate, our application process actually asks for their qualifications in 50 words or less, which perhaps we want to revisit and see if we can better assess applicants' qualifications, maybe in more than 50 words or with a resume attached. But that gives us a limited ability to assess the applicants. We get 50 words or less, not a whole CV, and often not an entire email or a personal conversation or knowledge. Thus, based on the 50 words or less I have in front of me, Michael Joyce appears to be qualified. And while the additional information that Counselor Hatch provides is of interest, it creates an unfair process to compare that against a candidate who is only able to provide us with those 50 words or less. I assume the mayor has done his homework, has carefully vetted his candidates, and come to his best conclusion, and therefore, I'm inclined to support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I guess in a rare instance, I actually agree with all the statements that have already been made, including Counselor Hatch's. I think this kind of shines light on issues that I have repeatedly brought to council about the vagueness in the charter, and I agree with Counselor Berman. It should be cleaned up because there's a lot of, again, vagueness there. When you look at aspects of the charter, it's very clear that it's council that is the judge of qualifications. But again, it doesn't really clearly state. It's up to our own personal opinion, and that's kind of how I've, you know, viewed it. I mean, so, in this particular case, you have two applicants, one put forth by the mayor that I tend to agree with Counselor Hatch. The prior applicant that was first in line appears more qualified to me. So, I would hope this is something we'd address. And then, just additionally, I guess where I have problems with this is, then going back to charter, it's the mayor's duty to keep council informed. So, until Thursday, I had no understanding we even had a vacancy on the planning board. No official resignation was submitted to council. So, it wasn't until today that I found out it was Jen Day that had resigned, or perhaps she hasn't. From my perspective, we have a seated planning board member, because there is no resignation that I'm aware of, which makes this problematic from my perspective to move forward a name without a resignation. Perhaps the rest of you feel okay with doing that, but I personally don't. I mean, so again, going back to keeping council informed, how many counselors know that we have a two-year vacancy on the Kimball Trust since Mr. Warren died? I know that because I personally knew Mr. Warren. Council has never been informed of that. We have a duty per charter to fill these vacancies within 30 days of their creation. How do I go about doing that as a counselor if I'm not informed there's a vacancy? So, again, not, you know, criticizing anybody here, I just would really like to get this cleaned up because it has become political because of the vagueness that exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me for a second. Pardon me just a second. A little dry out there. My real issue with this whole discussion kind of is, really on the issue of transparency, as Counselor Hatch has so want to repeat ad nauseam. I won't bore the audience with timestamps, but the council was sent the intent of what Counselor Hatch was going to do in terms of pulling the appointee or the nominee and his intention to speak to you tonight, although he made it a point to leave both myself and Counselor Purdy off that list. Fortunately, things don't happen in a vacuum, and it's a matter of public record anyway. I haven't got my, I haven't seen the text of Counselor Hatch's statement, although I'm pretty sure it's exactly what we heard tonight. So, when Counselor Hatch speaks of transparency, I must sit here and think, well, is it only transparency if you're getting your way? I mean, all things being fair, it's the mayor has the appointment power. One fellow happens to be a friend of yours, expressed interest in it, and the mayor said, thanks, I'll consider it, and then he gave, you know, gave the appointment to somebody else. That is a real power the mayor has, whether it's playing politics and whether we agree it's best practice or not, that we can have a discussion on that. But in terms of trying to get a result tonight, I mean, I'm not cynical, hopefully I'm not cynical enough to think it's sort of an attempt to redo the city historian fiasco. I like to think it isn't, but at the end of the day, both of these gentlemen are more than qualified. To Counselor Archer's point, I don't know any of them personally, but if it's the mayor's intent to appoint this gentleman, and he's more than qualified, I would support that. And as for Mr. Arson, pardon me if I'm mispronouncing your name, when he expressed his initial interest, I made it a point of emailing him back because there was a vacancy, there are a couple of associate vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I figured as a teacher with a history in Saco that he would, you know, be a good fit. So, I made it a point of saying, hey, you know, I don't know what the mayor is doing with planning board, but there's another position out there. Now, if Mr. Arson is a diehard and just wants one singular position, well, that's on him because, as I said, it's up to the mayor to fill these positions as he sees fit with council approval. And I have no problem with that arrangement. I mean, our system of government, though, doesn't give the mayor a lot of extra powers, though, but the people of this city all collectively vote for one position in the municipal government, and that's the mayor. So, it's a real power the mayor has to make sure that he has people in positions and that in his judgment would give us the best result and the best fair shake for Saco. And if people don't like it, the election's every three years, and it's, there are no parties involved, though. You get your signatures and get on the ballot, I believe. We had three or four candidates run for mayor a couple of years ago, so I mean, it's not insignificant power, though, but to sit here from the council and basically try to come up with some sort of conspiratorial nonsense just because it's some, it's a candidate that you don't support, I find completely disingenuous. And now that being said, I am open to debate. I am open to differences of opinion. Counselor Hatch and I, we haven't honestly sat down with a one-on-one discussion. Truth be told, I was opposed to his appointment to the council, and I, it's all on the record. But since then, we've been more than cordial to each other, and I've tried to be forward with him in group settings in terms of agendas and initiatives that I'm pushing and/or have pushed, and he's been perfectly honest with me in return. So, this sort of, this, him leaving myself and Counselor Purdy out of this discussion is leaving a little bit of a foul taste in my mouth, but I'll just simply say, Phil, you're gonna, you don't have an appointment. You don't have a opponent, so you're probably going to be on the council for three years. I'm going to be here for another two years. Let's try to work together because, you know, the council speaks as one, and I would not do any disrespectful stuff like this to you when it comes to something like this, and I expect the same courtesy. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll remind all counselors that per the ordinance, please direct all comments to the mayor and not to your fellow counselors.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion on this item, roll call vote on Item A. Confirm mayor's appointment of Michael Joyce to the planning board. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Staying on the grounds that I do not have a resignation in front of me. Thank you.
That is a 5-1-1. That brings us to Item 9, and that is new business. First up is Item A, BSUB Transit Presentation, Page 14 of your packet, and we'll hear from Executive Director Chad Hyde. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I just need a minute to log in here. My apologies here. Try one more time. Is that our IT help? Okay, there we go. All right. Good evening, everybody. I intend to keep this relatively brief. Over the last few months, we've been working on a number of different items. Tonight, the real focus is the planned development at the Saco Transportation Center that will allow BSUB Transit electrified buses, which we currently have two, to have access to an en route charging infrastructure system. I'm just going to go through a few quick slides, and then I'll open it up for question and any other comments. In advance of speaking about the Saco infrastructure project, I wanted to provide an update. The last time I was here was in March or April and was able to provide ridership details up to that point. What I've included here is the update that shows the continued growth in our ridership, both in our fixed route network, which is the blue line, and our trolley network, which is the orange bars. As you could see, month over month, we are increasing in the range of 500 to 1,000 per month. There are clearly many factors, gasoline prices being one of them, there are other factors at play, but I just wanted to provide this to indicate that the existing transit network that we're riding, that we're serving in the months of June and July in particular are showing ridership that we have not seen since 2019, 2020, pre-COVID levels. This slide indicates three different grant opportunities that BSUB Transit and varying partners were able to leverage for investment in transit infrastructure and capital improvements here in the BSUB network. 2019 was a joint application, low no, for those not up to date as low and no emissions grants, technology that allows public transit to operate fleet systems that provide zero emission output or considerably lower emission output. 2019, BSUB Transit and GP Metro partnered with Maine DOT and the state to apply for two battery electric buses, which we were awarded to, GP Metro was awarded to. The total grant application or award was around $5.5 million. BSUB Transit was awarded $2.83 million, of which 98% was provided either through FTA, Federal Transportation Administration, or Maine DOT's VW Settlement Funds. We began operating those two battery electric buses, as well as the depot charging infrastructure that allows our batteries to be charged day after day in May of '22. In 2021, February, we were awarded $1.36 million for the Saco Transportation en route charging infrastructure. These are different types of charging technology than what we have available at the depot. The depot is 150 kilowatt chargers, which require between six and eight hours for our batteries to be fully charged. The en route chargers are DCFC chargers, which are 450 kilowatts, similar to what you might see Tesla or the other EV charging stations at general retail and commercial uses. Those funds, $1.36 million, are really the heart of the conversation here today. Those funds are intended to build or purchase, design, engineer, construct, and implement the two en route chargers. As currently operated, the battery electric buses are able to give between 180 and 200 miles per full charge in optimum conditions, which is generally 60 to 80 mile, or degrees. There's other factors at play related to ridership, speed, topographic information related to the route, but 180 to 200 miles. In order for our fleet to operate a complete day, you really need about 300 miles of range. So, having that middle-of-the-day en route charging infrastructure is imperative for us to be able to leverage the assets that we've been awarded. 2022, this will likely be news for everybody. We were just awarded last week an additional $2.4 million, which was a sole venture and application by BSUB Transit, for two additional battery electric buses. We will begin the process of administering that program over the next few months, but the intent is to have two additional buses, moving our entire battery electric fleet to four, late in November '23, or as early as November '23 and as late as January, February '24. So, the conversation today is really about the Saco Transportation chargers, the center en route chargers. Before we get to the actual design or the concept for discussion, this is kind of our early evidence of how well the battery electric buses are working. We currently have a contract for 80,000 gallons of diesel that will likely expire sometime in November, December of '22, yeah, November, December of '22. We might be able to extend it a little further, depending on how much usage we're able to leverage with our battery electric buses right now, but this is kind of a new environment for us, so we're learning as we go along. June 8th to August 8th, I mentioned kind of the optimum temperature and environmental conditions to operate our battery electric buses. With the existing $3.14 a gallon, we get about six miles to the gallon, 52 cents per mile. What we're seeing in the first two months of use of our battery electric buses is considerably better than that, almost threefold. It's 17.8 something cents that I rounded up to 18 cents for simplicity. Again, the ability for us to leverage the battery electric technology is imperative for us to both manage and minimize our exposure to fossil fuels and also trying to program a consistent propulsion cost moving forward for the two buses currently and then four that we'll have in '23, '24. So, that brings us to the concept for discussion. BSUB Transit has submitted a site plan for approval to the city planning department. We've received feedback from the engineer and public safety and have had multiple really healthy conversations. I was asked to present to the city council so that everybody's aware of the conversation, aware of the concepts, and provide an opportunity for everybody to have input. At a high level, this concept has gone through multiple iterations. If you recall, I've only been here since July of '21. Most of the conversations and concepts happened in advance of my arrival. Since July of '21, this plan and this concept is really the one that we're moving forward. We've advanced into the application process. What it requires, without a laser pointer here, is where the new utility transformer is located on the left side of the picture, those are maintenance sheds currently. Two parking spaces will be reduced, which are currently the BSUB Transit employee parking spaces for the transportation center. The new utility transformer will be installed there. There will be a There will be a underground conduit that is bored from that transformer along the platform side of the Saco Transportation Center to the easterly main street side of of the parking lot, where there will be a switchgear and charger that will then link to the two pantographic en route chargers that I'll have to rendering, so you can have an idea of what they'll look like specifically. I do just want to note, this existing image, doesn't it have the updated parking lot striping? The the current bus circulation at the Saco Transportation Center has removed all the parking along the sidewalk side of the platform side of of the picture. The current, the plan for the bus circulation is to maintain the existing circulation, maintain the existing parking on that side of the building, and then reduce to parking spaces on the the utility transformer side. So here are two available styles for the en route chargers. The one on the left is called the modern. That has been designed and implemented across the country thus far by the manufacturer we are likely to partner with, Proterra. Or not likely, we have partnered with, Proterra. They are currently in the process of designing something that's more in line with a traditional street post. We haven't gone down the path of aesthetics thus far. We are really just looking for functionality and approval of the site plan, and we'll be happy to accept any consideration that the city wants to put forward related to style and aesthetics. Last item on the Saco Transportation Center, and then I have one more slide related to some other upcoming issues for BSUB Transit that may be of public interest. As I mentioned, we provided an application for site plan approval. The city has responded, the planning department has responded that they needed a few more pieces of information, a more built out engineering design plan, which we intend to provide over the next week or two, pending consultant behavior and activity. We also have a VRAP requirement, and I apologize, I do not know the what that acronym stands for, defer to city planning department on that one, but basically something related to the way that we manage the byproducts that come from the construction process. Once that is approved, we'll be able to move forward with our finalized engineering and implementation, which we hope can occur in the fall of '22 and construction in the spring or summer of '23. I do just call out bullet number two. We have a current lease agreement in place that expires. I apologize, it's either, I believe it's a year and a half from now. And in that current lease agreement, it does have a permitted use for installing charging infrastructure. Last slide, again, this is not related to the Saco Transportation Center en route charging project, but rather something that will be coming down the pike here over the next three to four weeks. In coordination with PAX, the MPO of the region, we are jointly working on service plan design with South Portland Bus Service, GP Metro, and the other transit providers, Paratransit, Fixed Route, Rail and Ferry, in order to better leverage our existing resources to maximize coverage, frequency, and provide potentially new services such as microtransit to to our regions. Over the next three weeks, based on the efforts of Nelson Nygaard, which is the consultant firm hired by GP Cog PAX to work through this process, they will be having pop up, public comment sessions. We will be hosting one at the Saco Transportation Center, currently planned for September 17th, although you'll have to refer to the website, Transit Together, to get more specific information. It'll be a four to five hour session that allows the consultants, as well as BSUB Transit staff, to message what the different iterations of service design are, discuss the value of the different service designs, discuss the trade offs of adding one element versus another element, and really looking for public feedback on anything that might be implemented long term. So I encourage folks to go to the Transit Together webpage to pay attention to what the the public participation process is, and to pay attention to when we announce the pop up date at the Saco Transportation Center to discuss the permutations of what future service could look like. With that, I am concluded.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Executive Director Hyde? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. Very informative presentation. I'm excited about the battery electric buses, but I do have two questions related to them. One is, while their performance over the summer has far outpaced their diesel counterparts, do you expect that to change in the colder months? I understand that batteries may be less efficient and the need for heat to be a little bit more. And second, it looked like you were setting up two charging stations, kind of on the on the bus route, maybe, if I understood your map correctly. And will that be sufficient to accommodate the four buses now that you're getting two more? Or will there be additional charging stations needed as the fleet increases?
Two very good questions. What we have done with the purchase of our two existing buses, as well as the plan for the the two incoming, the manufacturer provides a diesel heater option, so there will be a slight amount of emissions provided as a byproduct of that heating system. But what that heating system will allow us to do is draw primarily the same or more consistent range through the seasonality, cold versus heat. We're expecting to, we were expecting to not see the the level of performance in the summer months that we have, and perhaps we haven't had the, you know, consistent 90 degree heat that they have in other regions of the country. Case studies would say that in the winter, we are likely to get a 40 or 50% reduction on mileage. We just haven't seen it yet, and some of those case studies do not have the diesel heaters. So this first year really will be a a case study and analysis for us. Related to the the en route chargers and increasing to four, two chargers, we call it one charging station because the infrastructure that supports the chargers, but I could see how you'd call it that, and I maybe should discuss it as two stations. Think about the en route chargers as an opportunity to top up the charge. Every single trip, the buses come back for a layover period at the Saco Transportation Center. Generally, it's between 12 and 15 minutes for that layover period. When the buses are coming back, we can schedule which bus goes under the charger per trip. There will be ongoing analysis around how that's leveraged in order to make sure that we're optimizing our performance. But we also need to consider other variables related to pricing considerations. As Counselor Hatch and Administrator Canrath can speak to, I've been working in BSUB Transit, been working with the Public Utility Commission to design preferred rates for public transit or to ensure that the existing utility rates that are considered for DCFC, time of use accounts and primary accounts take into consideration the operational models of public transit. We expect, in work with some consultants, that we should be able to maintain the battery charge through 300 miles of range with the two pantographic chargers with a fleet of four. Anything beyond that would require additional consideration.
Thank you. Any further questions for Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So as you indicated, I personally have seen at least three iterations of this design. So I just wanted to be sure that I heard you correctly, and that's in this scenario, we're only losing two parking spaces.
That is correct, yep. On the back side here, I think my mouse will work these spots right here.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Up next, item B is an informational update on the WRRD upgrade, and I believe we'll be hearing from Director Carter.
Evening, folks. Thanks for having us. Joining me tonight is, as you're all familiar with, Emily Cole-Preska with the WRRD, and Daniel Bisson with Ty &amp; Bond, our engineering firm working on the project. First off, let me thank you for welcoming us. I'm going to start you off with a couple of, can you hear me all right? A couple of milestones that we've been through this year. The first one that we all know about is is the citizens passed a $50 million bond, which really got us going. But just in the last few weeks, we have completed what we call a full facility plan. With that, it really started out from where this project started with when we did the AAA process, when we had the resiliency study done with the committee. Right to now, with this document, it numbers almost 1,000 pages by the time we add all the appendices with it. It explains why we're doing the upgrade, how we get to the decisions that we are at now, and where we're going in the future. And also, the EPA has just released a document on community priorities, and Saco was focused on a nationwide document, how we went through this process, and it was very well received. And also, just last week, we received preliminary drawings for this project, it's like 153 pages, I believe. If anybody wants to come down and see those, they're certainly more than welcome to it. But that really brings us to the next phase of the project, which is going to be the financial piece. Recently, as many of you know, we received $3.9 million through the congressional district spending signed into law. That's been approved by the Senate. We have received $1 million in principal loan forgiveness from the Maine DEP if we go with the SRF program, the State Revolver Loan Program. And we tagged with $3.5 million from from Congresswoman Pingery's office. That just needs to be final approval. Also along with that, just today, we submitted our first application to the Maine Bond Bank for $5 million of the what's going to be $50 million. That's going to carry us into the next phase of project, what we'll call 60% design. And I'm going to have Dan talk to that a little bit on his slides. That's scheduled to take about another year. And with the SRF program, the Maine DEP is going to be very much involved. They're going to be like a team with us. We call it a three legged stool with the city, the engineering firm, and the contractor we're going to choose, but it's actually a four legged stool, because once we get into the SRF programs, the state's going to approve all the payouts. Everything has to be competitively bid and everything else, so they'll be a partner with us, and they'll be distributing the money as it goes. With that, I don't know if you want to have any questions, or I can just roll into Dan. He can talk about the next project, which is going to be construction management at risk. That's a different way to do projects as opposed to the typical municipal way of design, bid, build. And I'm going to let Dan walk through that first, and we can do questions after.
Sure. Thank you all. So we're going to talk a little bit about this CMAR, or construction management at risk approach, which is essentially an alternative delivery method to bring the design from where we are now, roughly 30%, through completion. And basically, because of the current climate and the disruptive supply chain issues and all sorts of other construction related issues, the team felt it was prudent to try to bring in more resources to try to address that and make more timely decisions. So I'll go through a little bit of some definitions to get you familiar with the words I'm using, to make sure that we're clear, some some industry standards and best practices, and we'll get into the overall schedule as we've laid that out. So CM is construction manager. Guaranteed maximum price is an important factor. This is the point where you've advanced the design enough for the construction manager to then become at risk, which means it gives them not to exceed price, to finish the design and build the facilities. We're the designer on this project, and, you know, typically, excuse me, typically, when we talked about percent design, that's a traditional approach to which you would do a project, and each one of those stages gets reviewed and approved and then moves forward. We're still doing that, although when you bring on a contractor, things get more fluid, and you start looking at critical factors in the design, ways to save money, not guessing on how a contractor is going to approach the project, but actually how he will approach the project. And that team works collaboratively together with the owner, the designer, the state, as Howard mentioned, or the DEP, and other partners in that process. And then there's a bid construction phase. That's collective. The construction manager manages that as opposed to the designer, but all parties are involved at the same time. So I'll walk through this a little bit. Here are some just best practices and industry standards if you want to get more familiar with it. ACEC, DBIA, these are pretty common, well-known names. The EGA, CDC, these are the documents control for contracts, contractual vehicles for both the designer and the contractor. The state, DEP, requires that in the state of Maine to use. We're very familiar with that. You've all been familiar with that with many projects in the past. And then, of course, the legislation is important. Chapter 595 allows the use of CMAR for municipal projects such as these in the water industry. So that was the basis for setting us up to where we are today, which is pretty exciting. We've done a lot of the preliminary work, which is the scoping and planning and figuring out how to build the facilities here on the very constrained site while they're operating, 24/7, 365. It's it's a very complex project and challenging, and many competing goals of this project to take on, which we've talked about in the past, and we can certainly get into some details on at a later time. But this next phase is important to be a procurement that will be let out for an RFQ, looking for a construction manager to submit, and they become an advisor through that period until you get to what the GMP would be. And they're helping that process, and I'll explain the scope at which we're looking to engage them on and bring them in. That goes to, you know, the first phase is all the prep. Then after you get into phase two, once that guaranteed maximum price is set, it fits within the budget, the scope is all set, the contractor starts procuring either materials, you know, pipe has got long lead time on it. Equipment has a long lead time on it now with supply and just chain disruption, could be up to a year in some cases. All that has to factor in how to build this as efficiently and cost effectively as possible to maximize the budget that Saco has. As they do that, we actually fold that into the design plans and make construction documents that is much more seamless than to do it, bid it out, and then deal with it in the field, and then change it, and change it again, and change it again. So it's a collaborative process. It's been well used in the water industry, and it becomes a vehicle to deal with these challenging issues on these long projects. It's a long construction project, multiple seasons. So that would look to begin construction into roughly the fall of 2023. It may start earlier, depending on how the packages are broken up for efficiency and and effectiveness. We'll determine that once we bring on the party that's selected as the CMAR to work together and determine all that. We've made some initial assumptions as the engineer, based on our experience in working on these types of facilities, and then we're going to present that to the construction manager when we get there. So just generally in the scope on the left side is work that we've already done. Through the middle, through the middle preliminary design piece. And to get us to the end, that last box to the 60% or the GMP, the contractor would come on and do a constructability review, do some value engineering on some of the items that we're designing, develop a cost basis spreadsheet, as well as estimating to verify costs, real time costs, real time delivered costs in the timeframe they needed in to build this project cohesively. That includes scheduling and also risk assessment and risk management. The next phase, in phase two, once the GMP is developed, permitting is finalized, the design development continues, and then the project is implemented in certain packages that are determined, and we can update you on that on a later time, once that process is preceded. And in general, this this diagram, you don't have to look at the details of it, but essentially that plant, we see all the boxes and circles. Those are actually buildings and structures and tankage. If you've been down to the site, they all have to operate. They all have lots of piping in and out of them and electrical connections and all sorts of details that have to be worked out. That's essentially the the detailed design phase that we're moving into to finalize. So we think there's five phases right now. We're going to update that once we get some feedback from a contractor and get into the process. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Yeah, that's that's the real trick here, is trying to maintain the plant running as we're trying to build a new one, and we have to really be careful about how we phase this. One big consideration to go on construction management at risk over design, bid, build, is we didn't want to have this all designed and come in with bids that are way above what we can afford. That was one of the biggest things we want to avoid. Plus, the contractor can give us kind of a peer review, say, I may do it this way and do it that way, and we can incorporate those right into the plans as we go with. So that's really where we're at today. I know it's been a year since we've been up here talking, but there's been a lot going on behind the scenes. There's a lot of work involved in this, as most, some of you can imagine. With that, any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions, Counselor Archer?
Yes, I'm not a blueprint reader.
Yes, I'm not a blueprint reader, but in the past, you've mentioned rising waters?
Yep.
And I mean, again, it may be on this phase construction blueprint that I'm seeing, but I'm not seeing walls or anything.
Oh, no, no.
Is that not part of this project?
No, it is. I think if you want to come down, we can send them to you, but the file's six, it's like 153 drawings that depict all that.
Okay.
A berm that comes around, a pump station that lifts everything in the air, we're raising tank elevations.
Okay. It's just hard to see with this.
Well, that, I wouldn't show you anyway, Council, that's just a planned view of the different phases of what we're going to do.
Gotcha, okay.
But there's certainly a lot involved with it. And our biggest criticality is getting electrical up into higher grounds.
Okay, thanks.
Also, not all those structures will remain there, some of those are marked for demolition, so the full plan shows it better.
Yeah, okay.
And how many feet will the area be raised as part of this project?
Yeah, this, it depends on which part of the site, you know, if you've been down there where the boat ramp is, the city boat ramp, that area is lower than in that portion of the road than the rest of the site. And so the portions of the site in the back are high enough, the ones in the front aren't so much. And we are raising the grade in different areas for different perspectives, some two feet and some more depending on what the current elevation is for that.
Right, that boat ramp's really one of the lowest sites right there, and that's really what we're concerned about flooding, so a big part of this project is resetting that boat ramp and a lot of things that are involved just for that part.
Thank you.
Currently cuts off access to get to the plant, so that's one of the vulnerabilities that you can actually get to the facilities in a tough title event.
Thank you. Any further questions, Councilor Berman?
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Council Archer?
I follow up to this one.
Sure.
Also, during the, I see that you're building in phases, any disruption to services, or are we going to have to like?
No.
Are we going to see the complaint site here is low water pressure, all this?
Oh, no, 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 no. We have thought this through quite heavily and how we're going to do that, that's what we call vernacular, maintenance of plant operations. We have to ensure that the plant is always running.
Okay.
So that may stretch our schedule of, you know, how we move things around. As far as water pressure, that would be more from the drinking water side.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I don't think No Flesh November will work very well, so hopefully it keeps going. I'm wondering about that guaranteed maximum price. I know materials, inflation is real, materials have become more expensive, you know, we did a bond for 50 million, is that still going to be the ballpark of our final cost? Are we looking at doubling, are we looking at?
To be completely honest with you, we've been into value engineering since this started. We had prices that were exceeding $70 million. We've had to make a lot of cuts along the way, we can't really keep up with the recession and everything else. Certainly, any monies that we can get from the federal government are going to help to do that, but that's why we're really going to have to go to the next peer review with the contractor, try to get that to the price that we can afford. We know we cannot go back to the rate payers and ask for more money. So we're just going to, if we're going to have to cut something out, we're going to have to cut something out. That will all be determined, Council, in the next.
And does some of that come back to council? Because the competing interests, of course, are to find something affordable today, but also to have it last 50 years, so we're not doing it again in 25 or 30.
That's exactly right, that's what we want to do, we have to account for growth in the city and all those type of things. We're trying to roll it all into one, the new requirements that are coming down. This is our one big shot to get it right, and we want to make sure we get it right.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation and update.
Thanks, folks.
That brings us to item C of New Business and its fiscal year 22 year-end TIF report. Coming forward as the Economic Development Director, Denise Clavett.
Thank you. I got a technology tutorial this afternoon, so let's just see if that works. You'll probably need to follow along on your iPads because it's a very, very small print. Maybe I need assistance. Well, maybe I think. Took a little while.
Looks like we're in business here.
Right, a little part of it showing, let's see here. There we go, little bit of a delay. A few years ago, I believe it was Councilor Johnson had asked for having a one-stop-shop document that would have everything described in one area. We had accounts in one document, we had categories in another, we had the budget, we had the CEAs in another document, and so this consolidates everything that we have. And so I'm not going to go through every single line item, there's 20 pages in this document, but I want to highlight some of the key projects that we're working on or are still in process of being completed. If you take a look at the two columns just to describe it, oh goodness, we're going to do an update? Let's try this again. So you're going to see the budget, so the budget column is what was appropriated in FY '22. Prior year is carried forward, is anything left over from FY 2021-19, it basically rolls over. So if you look at industrial park signage, that was actually a project budgeted in a prior year. We are starting the weight finding project this coming September, and that'll be industrial park signage, Millbrook, the new Philip Spring, as well as weight finding throughout the entire city. Jessa Burna is going to be running that project, a little bit of a hold on that for many reasons, but one of which was she was on leave for a little while. So if you take a look at some of the others, you folks unencumbered like the broadband, so that became rolled over into other projects. We still have funding in zoning ordinance maps, GIS overlays, and that's helping to find some capital projects that Public Works is overseeing with GIS. Oops, let's just move this here too fast. We fund transit, so now this year it's a little bit more technically run. The operations can be run out of the transit-oriented TIF district, and only capital can be run out of the respective districts. So you're going to see the FY '23 shifting a little bit. We still have money left to do the industrial park sidewalks. On a project basis, there's still a lot of workload ahead of that, but I believe Public Works will be getting those projects shortly. We also funded the Route 112 improvements, and there's a couple of line items with that, and then we'll work down. So the other piece of this document has the funding that comes into the TIF account for every single year. It talks about the actual expenditures, and then we also, in some of the line items, you'll see the credit enhancement agreements. The next one is 77 Industrial Park Road, business attraction and retention went on hold primarily because of COVID, that'll resume. And then we have been spending more money setting up the grants and loans program, and you'll see this year, we are just activating the Saco grant program with a cap of $15,000 for a three-to-one match. We've already had two or three businesses interested in applying. As we move down to the other, it's a little bit of a delay here. Spring Hill Business Park wastewater treatment plant, you're going to see that this, we unencumbered some of these funds, but this coming year in FY '23, about $800,000 will be funded out of these various accounts. This particular one, A Dewey Pile, has a credit enhancement agreement, you're going to see where, what the amount is that's been expended this year, and let me just see here. Again, as you go through, White Rabbit is another CEA that we have. So the other thing that I wanted to mention at the top is that it tells you the year that it actually expires. I think a lot of people, if people are questioning what year this comes to an end, you will know what that is. Also, Route 1 Sewer Project was funded from this as well. We are now funding a lot of the supported entities that are economic development-related, like SMFA and SMPDC, Millbrook Sinage. You'll see that the budgets have flipped from account to account for the economic development salaries based on available funding. It can be funded out of each TIF district. Glennis and I worked hard in the projections in the downtown, from here on in, it'll be primarily funded out of the downtown district because it has the capacity to do that. You'll see all the other credit enhancement agreements that we have, and the rest of these are pretty much projects that have been funded. And if there are any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Clavett regarding this one-stop-shop of all TIFs in the community? Councilor Johnston?
None of question, just thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, it's, you're the third economic development director that actually completed it, so thank you very much, it's very, very good.
You're welcome.
Any other?
I think in light of leaving too, it leaves somebody, at least they can pick up one document, and I mean, there's, we have plenty of supporting documents for research, obviously, but at least you can start with this document.
You, Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Doyle. I didn't see the old version, but I liked the new version, so that's very good. I just wanted to extend my heartwarming congratulations to your new position, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciated the service that you gave to the city of Saco, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
That brings us to item D, a zoning map amendment, 32 Lincoln Road, and I think we'll hear from City Planner Jason Garnum. That is page 45 in the packet.
Good evening, Councilors, Mayor Doyle. The Poulins own and reside at 32 Lincoln Road, that's map 101, Lot 24. Their property is approximately three acres in size and is developed with their single-family residence and pertinent improvements. And that property is located within the RC Rural Conservation Zoning District, where it is not served by public water or sewer utilities. However, the Poulins submitted a petition to rezone their property from RC to the MDR, Medium Density Residential Zoning District, to our office for the stated purpose of to build a second house for their family on the property. Minimum lot area in RC zoning is 80,000 square feet. For those of you who don't know, that's just under two acres, and so the property therefore is not large enough to split within the RC zoning. However, as you can hopefully see on the small map in the memo, that's somewhere in your packet, the property does but an existing MDR zoning district that encompasses an existing neighborhood that's located near and around the intersection of Flag Pond and Lincoln Roads. And so after a review by the planning board and suggestion from the applicant's surveyor, the applicant proposed to rezone only a part of their property, so it would be like the southeast portion to MDR and keep the remainder in the RC zoning district, such that the existing house would be within MDR zoning, and the undeveloped remainder of the property would be in RC zoning. And as configured, as roughly configured by the applicant's surveyor, both parcels would comply with zoning standards for lot size and street frontage. So this petition was reviewed by the planning board during two recent meetings, and as amended with the split zoning, the planning board did vote 5-0 to recommend approval of this zoning map amendment to you all, the planning board. So of course, this would go through the three-meeting process with you all, including a public hearing. That concludes my introduction, be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Councilor Purdy, you were assigned this, are you okay with being the council liaison?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Any questions for City Planner Garnum on this issue? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, I suppose really for more for the audience's benefit, what was the rationale of splitting the zones rather than just simply change the entire property? I mean, it's wonderful the planning board said, yeah, that sounds like a good idea though, but it's doesn't, something that, you have to forgive me, if it doesn't sound something that's something that we usually do though, so what is the rationale?
Well, the, in short answer, the rationale is to limit the total development that could occur subsequent to the amendment and the lot split. The broader purpose for limiting development in such a manner is because these lots are not served by public utilities currently. And while there are, you know, state and local regulations that set setbacks and development limits for properties that are served by private water wells and septic systems, the planning board perceived that, you know, limiting development in a way that they could while allowing a part of the proposal to go through to facilitate the Poulins, you know, reasonable objectives, it made sense to them from both a policy and a practical standpoint.
Any further questions on this item? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at item D on the packet, so I'm seeing a triangle, is that the whole property as today?
Correct.
And how will this triangle be divided?
There should be...
It's kind of hard to...
A link to a sketch map drawn by their surveyor, but I happen to have the paper version right in front of me. Yes, it's in the, if you hit the link to the planning board packet, it is.
Okay.
In there, I don't remember which page. So I have a sketch drawn by the property owner's surveyor that shows essentially the southeastern corner of the property that would both be rezoned to MDR and subsequently split, and then the remainder of the property to remain in RC. I'll walk around with it for your benefit if it's helpful.
So are we going to be adding a driveway to that, or are they creating a private street, because it's not going to be connecting to anything?
I'm pretty sure.
Turn it up.
If not, it is Exhibit 1 in your packet, under the item commentary, Exhibit 1. Any further questions on this item? We'll be seeing this come up at our September 12 meeting, September 12 meeting. Okay, thank you very much. Will you be joining us on the next item as well?
I'll be here for a few more minutes, yes.
Okay. And that is item E, zoning amendment, page 58 in your packet, small-scale energy facilities, solar panels, again, page 58 in your packet. Again, page 58 in your packet. While we load up the technical issues, technology issues, I should say. Counselor Berman, you were assigned this item. Are you agreeable to be in the council liaison after some questions are answered?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So you all, city council, enacted a moratorium on pole-mounted solar arrays located in residential areas during your June 6 meeting after receiving a petition request from several Sauk residence. And part of that moratorium, the purpose of that moratorium was to provide time for the city to develop appropriate land use regulations for such facilities. You further extended that moratorium during your August 8 meeting, such that, as currently configured, it expires on October 7. So in the meantime, planning staff have looked at similar regulations in nearby jurisdictions and worked with other city staff, most notably the code enforcement office and the city attorney, to draft zoning amendments that were then reviewed by the planning board during the July 19 and August 2 meetings. The planning board scheduled a public hearing to review those draft zoning amendments, and they recommend your adoption of them accordingly. So just a real brief presentation here. I articulated three goals behind these amendments. The first one is, I hope we can all agree, that we do, in the end, want to encourage investment in renewable energy sources by Sauk property owners for a whole variety of reasons related to the environment and property value and energy sustainability and so on. Our second goal, this is articulated in the purpose statement for the moratorium, is to devise a permit process and requirements that minimize potential impacts that such facilities may have on neighboring properties in nearby areas. And then the third goal that we had in devising these regulations is to write them in a way that they would be flexible into the future. We understand that there are some people out there much smarter than I am, constantly trying to design new, more efficient and more affordable technologies that would allow property owners of varying scales to invest in renewable energy facilities. And we wanted to write something that could be useful and relevant into the future and beyond. And, you know, maybe a little bit of a joke, I put a picture of a hamster running in a wheel with, who knows, maybe someday our systems will be so efficient, we can generate some power from our pets. So just maybe not the best formatted slide in the world, but, you know, the column on the left is just a few things that I had in mind when we drafted these regulations. So in a nutshell, the process that this amendment lays out for obtaining permits for new facilities is that all equipment would be subject to building and/or electrical permits from Sauk's code enforcement office. And then with the purpose in mind of minimizing impacts on nearby properties and areas, any new facility located in front yard areas, basically along street fronts, would require conditional use, review and approval by the planning board, in addition to those building permits. And so summarizing the standards, mainly put this together knowing that most people don't really enjoy reading zonies. And I also wanted to really clarify our intent here for the fact that if the regulations that are in draft form currently don't clearly express this intent, then we certainly want to make it better before it sort of goes to press. So the real highlights here are that for freestanding equipment, whether they be solar panels or some yet-to-be-imagined facilities, those would have to be at least 75 feet away from any street property line. They would be limited in height to 20 feet at their highest point. The largest they can be from an area standpoint is 2,000 square feet. And screening would be required. That's not to assume that it's necessarily screening right next to the facility. It's more of a requirement to make sure that neighboring homes would not be impacted by glare or, you know, visual intrusion and so on, such that perimeter landscaping and fencing could achieve the requirements. And then roof-mounted equipment, we really heard loud and clear from the planning board members especially that, you know, we don't want installation of roof-mounted solar equipment to be burdensome. However, we did say that they cannot exceed the maximum building height of the underlying zoning district. And some of the numbers in the draft ordinance are admittedly a little bit arbitrary, but we basically said they cannot extend more than five feet above any roof line, with the understanding that in some locations, roof-mounted equipment may impact views from neighboring properties. Oh, that's the end of the slideshow. So some other details, certainly they're written such that the underlying setbacks from any applicable zoning would still apply. Any equipment that could fall would have to be designed to fall only on the property where the equipment resides, and there is a requirement for removing any equipment after it's no longer functioning. Should be noted that financial guarantees or decommissioning funds were contemplated by the board. The original draft had a section requiring that, but upon discussion, the planning board determined that such guarantees or funds somewhat conflict with the goal of encouraging investment in these facilities by, in some cases, potentially doubling the cost to invest in them. So it was decided to remove those requirements from the ordinance. So that concludes my summary. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your hamster in the wheel page, you were identifying like that there's unknown technology out there and to keep it open. With this new Inflation Reduction Act that just passed, there's a lot of tax credits, so I have a feeling there'll be a lot of purchases, people looking at this. So maybe looking at what that act allows and making sure that at least some of those may be in there if they're not identified. Because I have a feeling that these tax credits are going to drive people to purchase these types of equipment to help out with energy savings and things like that. So I think that would answer your question marks, is identifying what the feds have said are likely to be purchased. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. Could you advance to the detail slide? Thanks. Two questions about these numbers and where they came from, and then one additional question. Can you talk about the 75-foot setback from the streets and the 20-foot height limit and how you came up with those numbers? I know those were of particular interest to some of the Thunder Road residents. And then also, is there a minimum setback from neighboring properties, whether it's in the front or backyard?
Yes, I'll answer the second question first. The underlying zoning setbacks will apply inside and rear lot lines at minimum, because again, if a piece of equipment is proposed to be 20 feet tall, but the minimum setback is only 10 feet, the equipment would still have to be at least 20 feet from the property line, such that if it blows over, it will remain on the subject property. Admittedly, many of the numbers within the draft ordinance, and if you look at the draft language itself, you'll see that I highlighted some of them. Those are entirely arbitrary, admittedly, including the 75-foot setback. I had initially proposed a 50-foot setback for front yards, and it was the planning board that came up with the larger setback to increase the sensitivity toward neighborhood views and street edges and things of that nature.
And are you aware of what any neighboring communities do or best practice in the industry?
Yeah, we looked at ordinances. I believe if you want to click over into the planning board packet, I did find ordinances from a couple of neighboring jurisdictions, and some of the limitations that are in the draft ordinance were copied and pasted directly from them, admittedly, because, again, getting into these numeric standards without a clear basis, we're just throwing things at the wall and figuring out, you know, how it'll achieve the intent.
Thank you.
Any further...
Sorry, that said, those numbers can still be changed if there's a reason to.
Any further questions, Counsel Archer?
Yes, I just want to follow up with Counsel Berman's questions with setbacks. What this I'm seeing right now, and again, I know we're at the infancy stages, is it effectively takes away any downtown options? Thinking about density, is there consideration to allow maybe smaller units, like not be so strict that this applies throughout the whole area? Whereas I don't see anything downtown being allowed with a 75-foot. But I also see the benefit in a cul-de-sac or a development, obviously you wouldn't want it five feet away either. So I'm not seeing any considerations for like trying to encourage downtown, other than using a roof. I get the roof is still available, don't get me wrong, but these freestanding equipment, and I'm not an expert what that would include, 75-foot could be, for downtown density, could be an issue.
I think you're probably right. And no, we didn't really contemplate separating out the standards by zoning district.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, though. To Counsel Archer's point, though, I would certainly be open to restoring it to 50 feet, unless, to Counsel Archer's point, though, we were to sort of divide it into sort of a generic downtown and rural, you know, zoning thing, if we want to go that route. That's a discussion for another time. My question was, in terms of a screening required, what type of screening did the planning board or planning office have in mind? Shrubbery, wood? I mean, because, like I said, if a lot of this comes down to aesthetics, though, the last thing I want is folks coming in here saying, well, we got what we wanted, but now they're, they put up this god-awful mural that blocks it, though, so we're back to square one. So what do we have in mind?
Well, I think what we would typically expect to see is some sort of trees, you know, planted along property lines that would help screen some of the impacts from a piece of equipment in your backyard on your, you know, on your neighbors. I think probably the primary concern is anything that may produce glare. So certainly if somebody is going to erect a solar panel, set at a certain angle, I think this ordinance requires them to demonstrate that the glare won't shine into Counselor Hatch's windows or anything of that nature. Trees and fencing, most likely, to answer your question.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I think prohibiting it downtown is a feature and not a bug of this. A 2,000-square-foot solar panel, 20 feet in the air on a pole, fundamentally changes the characteristic of a front yard pretty significantly, and would change the characteristics of our downtown if allowed. And really, it's, while I firmly support our renewable energy and solar use in general, many of us looking out at our neighbors or trying to sit in our front yard and finding ourselves in the shadow of a 2,000-foot solar panel 20 feet above our heads would feel that the characteristics of our neighborhood and neighbors had changed. Rooftop solar is, of course, a fundamentally different issue, but I don't think this size of infrastructure really belongs in our downtown, and nor do I think it belongs within 50 feet of a front yard. I strongly oppose reducing that, and in fact, I think that's a fundamentally strong characteristic of this draft bill, is that it would prevent it in our densest neighborhoods.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yes, I would agree with Counselor Berman on that. I think most people that are interested in this, really throughout the city, are more likely to put it on their rooftop unless they have an abundance of land where they could put a larger system. And I think that's what this really addresses. Thank you.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, when I presented downtown density, I was also thinking proportionality. For example, what if you had a minimal freestanding equipment that just power charges your Tesla? Things like that. I'm not talking about limits of 20-foot high downtown where you just, like, something to that effect, but proportionality. So you would look in denser areas, not allowing these limits at all, but to allow something. For example, I could see technology out there where you can just, if you don't have a garage and you have a Tesla, you do have an outdoor power charging equipment. Now, you wouldn't need a 2,000-foot product in order to meet your needs. Again, I'm just, I'm looking at proportionality. Farmlands obviously can have more than even residential, even a, again, look at it through the density. What is density like and what products best fit that type of zone? That's where my brain was working, not to have a 2,000-foot just cover my whole yard in downtown here on Pleasant Street at my tenant's house.
Any further discussion on this item? If you'd like to see any changes, please email Planner Garnum and/or City Administrator Keanrath, perhaps both, regarding your suggested changes. And you'll see this on September 12. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us to Item F on page 66 in your packet, and that is a street acceptance of Taylor Berry Lane and Ocean Green Drive.
So with this one, we have developer Mike Mazoyan submitted a request for the city to accept ownership of Terry, excuse me, Taylor Berry Lane and an extension of Ocean Greens Drive. These are streets that are part of the Juniper Knowles II subdivision, which is mostly built out at this point. At this point in time, those streets and associated public improvements, including stormwater facilities, are 100% completely finished per review and inspection by the city engineer. And as I think you can see in your packet, the deeds for transfer of those properties have been written and reviewed and approved by the city attorney. So the planning board did review this petition during recent meetings and recommends for you all to accept these improvements as public facilities. There was, however, a glitch in administration of this project and completion of it that is somewhat separate from the that is somewhat separate from the street and stormwater facilities, but I would be remiss if I did not bring them up because it was a topic of significant concern during the planning board meeting. There is a condition 17 that was in the approval from the planning board. This subdivision abuts the Rachel Carson Wildlife Refuge, and there are nearby trails that are maintained by the Audubon Society and Saco Bay Trails. Condition 17 required the developer to construct trailhead facilities and connections to those trails for public use and access. And in an effort to memorialize that, there were two potential trailhead locations noted on the recorded subdivision plan. These are both in stormwater easement areas. Unfortunately, this occurred before my time here at the city, but the easements for those stormwater facilities were recorded without provisions for public access to them and have since been deeded to individual private property owners who have purchased lots within this development. And after investigation, it's been found that those private property owners do not want public access on their properties. So we cannot really force them to. So the planning board looked at this issue during an extensive public hearing and, again, voted to recommend city acceptance of the streets, but then conditioned approval of that on the city, mainly through we at the planning office, to retain or require the cities, sorry, the developers' lender to retain financial guarantee funds for the project until that condition is met. And in an effort to facilitate fulfillment of that condition, city staff, including Ryan Summer, Parks and Recreation Director, has been meeting with Saco Bay Trails representatives and folks from the Audubon Society to determine the feasibility and process for coming up with a Plan B for those trails. So I just wanted to advise you of that because I know that you will probably hear from residents in that neighborhood. And we're doing our best to remedy that situation, but be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Planner Garnum. Any questions, Counselor Archer?
Yes, and again, without only knowing about what you just presented and not behind the scenes, it sounds like the plan is not completed. So I would say we shouldn't be accepting the street until the original plan was developed. We've pre-approved, Counselor Johnson, I believe, the mayor, when we were all councilors together in a previous... I believe we were fighting a particular developer to get stuff done, and I'd rather not do that again. I'd rather hold off onto the street acceptance until the plan is actually complete, which would include the trails. And it would be a private street until then.
Thank you. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Planner, what progress, to your knowledge, has the Audubon and Saco Bay Trails made on finding some sort of alternative to, I guess, what was the original plan for those trails?
That work has only just begun. Ryan Summer and Saco Bay Trails representatives met with folks from IFW and Audubon just a matter of two or three weeks ago. So this is a moving target. There is a push-pull here to recognize Counselor Archer's comment. My office and presumably others have been receiving calls for well over a year from residents of that neighborhood who really want the city to take over the streets. So, you know, like, I'm between a little bit of a rock and a hard place on this one. There isn't really a clear answer right now on how to fulfill that condition while also satisfying many of the residents' desire to have the city take over service of their neighborhood.
Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to agree with Counselor Archer. I would have a lot of trouble voting to accept as a public street a project that isn't finished. Those of you who follow Saco Bay Trails are aware, they have pretty bold aspirations to create an interconnected trail network in our region, allowing pedestrian and bicycle-friendly transit, which I'm strongly in support of. And the Wildwood Trail is an integral part of that plan. It's recently been completed with bridges built, but it requires a trailhead on that end and isn't a usable trail until then. Furthermore, I'm confused a little bit by some of your comments. It seems like the developer failed to meet their obligations, but the city is doing a lot of work to remedy that situation. And I'm curious about why this is falling on Ryan Summers and your shoulders to remedy an oversight by the developer.
Yeah, that's a good question. To be honest, I don't know that Audubon or the federal landowner would be willing to work with a private developer. I don't know about the specifics in this case, so I can't make any assertions. But it's typical that broader jurisdictions will only work with municipalities when doing these things. But again, I don't know the facts in this case. It was Ryan volunteered to coordinate this essentially after many of us meeting with the developer and neighbors on site a month or so ago.
Yeah, thank you. I have concerns that the solution may end up being more expensive than a financial guarantee the developer has left, and thus maintaining the financial guarantee doesn't actually guarantee completion of the trailhead.
If it helps, the amount of the financial guarantee as it sat is more than $700,000. That said, the city has not released any portion of that financial guarantee, but our office reached out to the bank that holds it, and they have not verified that they have it. So I don't know what's going on. This may involve legal action, potentially.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in agreement with the two prior councilors that have spoken. I'm not really inclined to accept this as is without those other conditions. You know, as Counselor Archer alluded to, I went through a similar situation. It took years to rectify. And again, not putting, I don't know who's at fault. Ultimately, I don't really care. I care that the condition be met, and how it's met really isn't for counsel to decide. I know people that live in that subdivision. I've heard about the issues. And while there are people that want that street accepted, there's equal amounts of people that are in that subdivision that want access to that trail, along with other residents throughout the community. So I don't know where that really leaves us, but that's my take on it. Thank you.
City Planner Garnum, it appears that the council, there is consensus amongst them not to accept the street until the items have been met by the developer and the homeowners involved. So at this point, we will not be bringing it forward for consideration to the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I will advise the developer accordingly.
Thank you. That brings us to item G in ACOE, excuse me, ACOE Letter of Support. A letter was drafted and sent to you through City Administrator Keanrath earlier this afternoon. And before we get into that, I would just like to thank Save Our Shore Saco Bay for their efforts over the weekend. They held a well-attended community meeting down at Hewitt's Restaurant. And I want to thank SOS President Kevin Roach and SOS Vice President David Plaven, who is seated in the audience. So with that, City Administrator Keanrath, do you want to speak on your draft letter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, this is very similar to a letter we sent to the Army Corps almost three years ago now. Really, this one also incorporates the latest cost share numbers, the 2.394%. And just saying, the city of Saco is in agreement with that, and we are willing to move forward and look at drafting a project partnership agreement together. That's really all it does. If you're okay with it, we will send it off. If you have any edits, please let me know. Otherwise, that's pretty much it.
So if there's no changes or no edits, this will be an action item on the 12th, on September 12th, to get out to the Army Corps of Engineers with the idea and the hopes that they will respond back to us with a project partnership agreement prior to the end of the year. And that is the goal at this moment in time. So any questions on this letter of support? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to confirm, as I understand it, both Senator King and Senator Collins' offices have advised us that now would be a timely moment to send this letter of support in order to prevent further delays. The cost estimate has been finalized by the ACOE. So I could verify that that's correct.
That is the guidance.
Yeah, thank you. And then also, just to note for the public watching, that while the $660,000 may initially seem like a lot of money, it's actually an incredible deal for a project like this. It's really a small amount of money and just several years' worth of sand replenishment and maintenance that we currently spend in fighting erosion and the impacts of the current jetty. So we'll recoup these monies fairly quickly, assuming the project is successful.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I wholeheartedly support the letter. And I'm sure that Mr. Keanrath chose his words carefully. At least, I believe he did, reading it. And certainly doesn't put us on the hook for $660,000 with the word "willing." But I was just curious, at this time for the public, you know, knowledge of the public, have we identified any potential sources of that amount? Or is that yet to be determined? Either way, I'm still willing to...
Yet to be determined. There's always, obviously, you know, unassigned fund balance, but that's to be determined, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this letter of support? Counselor Berman, are you willing to be the liaison?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. And so you will see this on the September 12th meeting. That completes the new business agenda. Brings us to item 10, administrative updates. City Administrator Keanrath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of real quick updates. First, reminder nomination petitions are now available. 35 signatures are required, and they're due back in the Corps' office by September 9th to be put on the ballot. Upcoming agenda for September 12th, we'll have a FY '22 year-end update from Finance, Economic Development Market Analysis Report. 32 Lincoln Street will be back in first reading, and we'll have the small-scale energy facilities back in first reading also. We're also going to be working on BPI for the Ecology School, short-term rentals, and the draft regional MOA for the dredge program. The next open office hours will be tomorrow, 3:30 to 5:00, here on the 2nd and 4th City Hall. Of course, all residents and local business owners are welcome to attend. And lastly, I just want to say a thank you to Saco PD, volunteers, staff, everyone involved for putting on National Layout a few weeks ago. It was a great success. We had a brief hiatus due to COVID, but the event seems to be back and better than ever. So thank you to everyone for their involvement there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Keanrath? Seeing no questions, moving on to item 11, council discussion and comment. Seeing no... Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to join others in thanking Denise Clavett for her years of service to the city of Saco. As when I first started on council, you've been very informative and helpful in terms of learning the ropes and the ins and outs of this city, and I appreciate it tremendously. And I wish you the best in your future endeavors and with your new employment. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Archer.
Yeah, just like to piggyback off Counselor Gunn, to the economic director, Clavett, I still remember the dollar picture. You helped me understand TIF. You took a very complex system and kind of broke it down to the benefits, and to which it helped guide my decisions on how TIF's money are spent because I had a greater understanding of what that program was. Again, I remember you splitting the, I believe it was 55-45 was your dollar picture that you gave us. And again, it's burnt to my brain. So while you move on to other practices within the state, providing similar work to other municipalities, at least I will be able to retain that information. And taking on Counselor Johnson's suggestion with the TIF tracker has also been very helpful to me in tracking what's going on within the city. Thank you very much.
For your service.
Thank you. Seeing no further council discussion and comment, it brings us to item 12, executive session. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405, Paragraph 6, D, labor contract negotiation, C, economic development discussion, and A, personnel matter.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Archer, any discussion? Roll call vote to enter executive session. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 8:31 PM. We'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll be downstairs. Five-minute recess, we'll be downstairs.
Okay, we're back. I'll entertain a motion to exit executive session.
So moved.
Consulate Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulate Hanch. Any discussion? Roll call to exit executive session. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Consulate Purdy?
Yes.
Consul Argon?
Yes.
Consulate Berman?
Yes.
Consulate Hanch?
Yes.
Consulate McPhail?
Yes.
Consulate Johnston?
Yes.
Exit executive session at 9:46. Consulate Johnston, is there a motion from executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I authorize, or I moved to authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement between the City of Saco and the Saco Professional Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 2300 AFL CIO CLC for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
Motion's been made by Consulate Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulate McPhail. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Consulate Purdy?
Yes.
Consul Argon?
Yes.
Consulate Berman?
Yes.
Consulate Hanch?
Yes.
Consul McPhail?
Yes.
Consulate Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve the fire contract. With that, brings us to item 14. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Consulate Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulate McPhail. Any discussion? Roll call to adjourn. Consul Archer?
No.
Consulate Purdy?
Yes.
Consul Argon?
Let's have some fun. No.
Consulate Berman?
Yes.
Consulate Hanch?
Yes.
Consul McPhail?
Yes.
Consulate Johnston?
I could abstain.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-2 to adjourn at 9:47. Have a great evening, everyone.